Very happy that you are here. I want to welcome all of our guests. When I arrived here a little bit this, earlier this afternoon, it was shared with me that your hosts and the people who are giving you this three-day whirlwind tour of St. Pete College and its many campuses, that most of them are pretty well worn out, but you were still, had tons of energy and you were just raring to go. And so, in that respect alone, you've impressed a lot of people already, so.
Great, that's wonderful, thank you.
I know that you've met the other trustees here, and again, we're very, very happy that you're with us today and looking forward to having a great conversation.
Thank you, I'm glad to be here, I appreciate you all considering me, I really appreciate it, thank you, it's a great honor.
Before we start in with some questions, just, if you wouldn't mind, just give us a little first impression of St. Pete, St. Pete College and what you've experienced over the last couple of days.
Oh, my first impressions, well, I knew that St. Pete College was a great college and has a national reputation, but I'll be real honest, I did not realize how wonderful the facilities were, and whether you're talking about the maintenance of them, or the refurbishment of them, or the equipment that we have all across the county and all the different learning centers, absolutely wonderful. The people here are very student-centered, very warm, very caring, I've been very impressed with that, and also very impressed with all the partnerships. And then the last piece is, St. Pete Colleges has been very entrepreneurial, very leading edge in a lot of different areas, and I think that you represent what the look of what the future community college should look like. And I know we've taken the word "community" out of the name of the college, but I also know that a part of our mission is still to serve the community in which we live here, which would be Pinellas Park, Pinellas County, sorry.
Sure, great, well, thank you, thank you very much.
Very impressed.
Great. As you know, you were furnished with some questions, which all the candidates have the same questions, and in an effort to try to be as fair and equitable to all the candidates, you all have the same first 10 questions, but I'm sure that as we move through these questions, depending on some of your answers and so forth, that we'll probably be diverging into other areas, and so, and what we've done as a group is we have kind of divvied up the questions as to how we're going to ask them. So, Mr. Johnston, I believe that you are first on the list, so if you would like to go ahead and start it off.
I will, and I'm just gonna make one comment. Since we've dropped the word "community," we are now the community's college.
There we go.
Is the kind of the way I look at it.
Okay.
So, we haven't changed a whole lot.
That's great.
First question is, why did you apply for the presidency of St. Petersburg College?
Well, to tell you the truth, I've been watching St. Petersburg College for about 10 years now, and trying to watch, look at the Chronicle, and kind of waiting for Dr. Cutler to retire, because I've had it, and it's not that I wanted him to retire, but I've had it in my head that St. Pete College is a college that when he retired, if I have enough experience behind me and if I'm in the right place, that I would like to apply for the position. And the reason for that is because St. Pete has such a great reputation, a great programs, you're very entrepreneurial, leading edge with regards to the baccalaureate programs. I think, in my mind, you're doing everything that we should be doing with regards to a 21st century college. The other piece is that you're in Florida, and I absolutely love Florida, I miss living in Florida, I did live in Orlando for about four years, and I have family here in Pinellas County, and actually, my son lives in St. Petersburg, and I just found out recently, my daughter's moving to Florida from Boston. She's arriving today at 4:00. But that wasn't part of the reason I applied.
Can, I want a follow-up question on this, if it's okay. You were a president and then stepped up to a vice chancellor.
Yes.
Can you walk us through that scenario?
Yes. First of all, I want to, I don't want you to think that it was a step up, in my mind, it was not a step up, okay? So, let me, let me correct that. There were several things that happened before I was assigned to the system office. Kentucky is one large state system with 16 community colleges and several, a lot of the community colleges have more than one campus, including Owensboro. And I just want to give you a little background information. Owensboro is a community that is very tight, is very clique-ish, and is not very accepting of newcomers, and in fact, they have actually run, a lot of outsiders run them off. So, they have a history, that's just what the history is. There were several things that happened before I was assigned to the system office. One of the things that happened is that I was held two faculty, I mean, two administrators accountable for their job responsibilities. There is a group of about a dozen people at the college, and about three people, three or four people in the community, in Owensboro community, who were friends with these people in the group, this is part of the clique I'm talking about, who, who decided to make it, who decided they wanted me removed as president. And it's my understanding that the folks that work at the college who wanted that to happen, the reason they wanted that to happen was because that they had flourished under the former administration. And of course, I came in and I, you know, I didn't really know what had happened, you know, before, because I, you know, I wasn't there, but I come in and I'm very inclusive, and so I included everybody in decision-making and putting them on committees, rather than this small group of people. And so, it's my understanding that they were not happy with that. The other thing that occurred is I asked a question about the way some workforce dollars were being utilized at Owensboro Community and Technical College. Another piece, in my mind, there's a lot of different threads. Another piece is that I had applied for college presidency in Idaho, it was a brand-new community college, and I thought it might be a really nice opportunity, so I had applied for that. It seems like there's another piece that I probably should mention, but there were just a lot of different things that happened. I received suddenly a letter from the system president that I was being assigned to the, to the system office, that's the bad news. The good news was I had 146 faculty and staff fill out my evaluations, and only 12 said that I had done a poor job with regards to leading the college. The other people were very happy with what I had done, and in fact, there were about 12 pages of written comments front and back, and also had a good evaluation from my board.
It's, how is the Kentucky structured? Is it trustees, or is there a chancellor that controls the presidents of these 16 community colleges, or?
We have, we all have our separate accreditation in terms of the 16 colleges, and we all have what's called a Board of Directors. They're, they're primarily advisory, although they, they also have to approve, approve the strategic plan and approve the budget. The system is a, is a large system, the headquarters is in Versailles, and there is a president over the system who also has a Board of Regents.
But it's not like, it's a little different in Florida.
It is different.
Because you have, we have trustees here that, their main responsibility is the president, fire or whatever, and no one in the state then can supposedly influence that.
Yes, it's very, very different.
Thank you.
The chancellor hired you in Kentucky, correct?
The president of the system. The chancellor in Kentucky would be the number-two person.
Okay, the president, he hires all the presidents for all the community colleges throughout the system.
He does, he has the, he has the say about what happens.
And is he has the one, the ability to fire, too?
Yes.
Okay. Was the Board of Directors' responsibility in that process?
Well, I guess not much. You know, the way, the way it's supposed to work is that the Board of Directors are supposed to have a say and are supposed to evaluate the president, and that that's supposed to count for something, as well as the faculty and staff.
I think, we think that's a bit, bad system that you have in Kentucky. We like the local control here. Right, Dick?
I think, I think that there's a, I think there's a lot of people in Owensboro who would like the local control, too.
Well, thank you for your comments, it sounded kind of very honest and right, forthright, so I appreciate that.
You know, I have to be real honest, there's no, I have to be honest about it, because if you Google me, it's all over the place, first of all, and secondly, that's just, that's really just the way I am. There's been a lot of articles in the newspaper, I'm thinking that since April, there's probably been 40 different articles, and it may be even more. The last article was about two weeks ago. I don't want to leave here without you knowing that I did file a lawsuit. I felt like I had to, because I don't know what the future holds for me. And also, the local newspaper, when they, they report the articles and they're very factual, but it appears that they very much want to know, why was a popular president, why is a popular president no longer at Owensboro? And they actually have asked to see my faculty and staff evaluations, as well as some other papers, that the Attorney General in Kentucky has ruled is public information. The system has decided to fight that and actually filed a lawsuit against the Messenger Inquirer. So, I know that you all have a lot of stuff going on here in St. Petersburg with regards to the local newspaper and different things that have been reported recently, so I just want you to know that I think Owensboro's got the same thing going on.
Well, you don't feel like the Lone Ranger, because we've had our names in the paper here recently, too, all of us, for one reason or another.
Yes.
You probably have read those, too.
I've read a little bit.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for coming, Dr. Gastonfeld, and I'm gonna ask you the next question. If you become president, what will you concentrate on your, on, in your first 30 days?
First of all, let me tell you all, feel free to call me Paula, okay? And if you're not comfortable with that, a lot, lots of times, people call me Dr. G, because, you know, they kind of stumble over my last name.
Me, too, because I had a good jump shot, but.
The question, you know, the question is, what would I do the first 30 days? And I want to address that by saying that even before I got here, there are some things that I would do. As soon as you all offered the presidency to me, I would start getting information and researching and looking at various documents that I have not had a chance to look at. I'd also be talking to the vice presidents and the provost, basically just to make sure that I have an understanding of everything that I need to know, just to, just do a lot of research with regards to the state, you know, those sort of things, so that when I start the first day, I'd be off and running, so to speak. The first 30 days, I would be doing a lot of listening and talking to people here at the college, as well as externally, I'd be spending a lot of time talking to you all, and primarily just listening. One of the things that I would plan on doing is to give a survey out to all faculty and staff with, you know, just four or five questions on it about, you know, what do you, what do you think the president should be concentrating on these first few months? What are your concerns? What do you think the big issues are over the next couple of years, that sort of thing? I'd also do a similar survey for community leaders, as well as I would want to get input from you all with regards to that. And so, I would gather all that information up and share it with the cabinet, and then I'll look at the strategic plan, and then we would, we would move from there. But I think mostly, the biggest thing that I would need to do the first 30 days is try to get to know everybody, make sure everybody knows who I am, learn, meet the legislators, meet the people, the community leaders. I think it would be, I think I would be very, very busy, and just listen to what people have to say. Is there, let me ask you all this, is there, what would you want me to do the first 30 days?
You asked a question.
I don't think we, I don't think we have enough time to, we only have two hours for this interview, we may have to save that. That's my opinion, but go ahead if somebody wants to jump in.
Well, I'd, I'd like to hear some comments. You talk about, in your, what you gave to us, evidence of entrepreneurial spirit, and that's a subject that I can see declining state funding, at least in Florida. You said you raised maybe a half a million dollars, or it's somewhere, but what are your thoughts on that?
In terms of an entrepreneurial spirit?
Right, in order to raise funds to supplement what the state gives to us.
I think it's pretty evident, and it doesn't matter what state that you're in, that community colleges and all our public institutions of higher education are no longer state-supported, instead, they're really state-assisted. And as a result of that, I think that we need to be looking at other ways to bring permanent dollars into the college that helps us to meet the needs of our students and create learning experiences for our students. In other words, to continue the work that we're supposed to be doing in the classroom, as well as support services outside the classroom. And I think that that means that we need to be really thinking outside the box, so what does that mean? That means that we might look at some products that we could produce that would be, people would be interested in statewide, or even nationally, maybe there's a group that we could partner with. There may be a way that we can use our facilities that we haven't thought of in the past, so that other groups can come in and use it and still be good community partners. There may be some opportunities in our academic programs that provide new and different learning experiences for our students, but that also brings dollars into the college. So, and, you know, the question is, how do we get to that point? And I think what we need to do is we need to put a lot of different people together to help come up with some ideas. And I think that there's probably a lot of good ideas within the faculty and staff that we have here. I don't have, I don't have all the answers. There, you know, there's other areas, too, that we, where we can get dollars, but they're not permanent, and when I say an entrepreneurial spirit to get, bring in dollars, I'm talking about permanent dollars. You know, we've always depended on state dollars and tuition, and we've been raising the tuition, and, and actually, that's, we're putting the, taking, asking the very people who can't hardly afford it, and who really need the access to higher education, we're asking them to foot the bill. So, I think that there's also always being on the lookout for grant opportunities, and making sure that, usually when we get grant opportunities, we don't have very much time to apply for them, so we need to make sure that we're, we are ready, and we already know the direction that we're moving in when a grant opportunity comes along. And also, not to ask for grant dollars just because they're out there. We need to know, you know, the direction we're moving in and the focus that we want to take. We also need to, and community, I know you all have a great foundation, but there's a lot of community colleges that have not done a good job with raising dollars, or the flip side of that is their foundations are very young. So, we need to do a really good job in terms of bringing dollars in through the foundation, because another way that we can help our students with the tuition cost, so, so let's say, for example, we still need to keep raising our tuition. One of the ways we can help our students with the tuition cost is to make sure we have lots of scholarship dollars out there, and the way to do that would be through fundraising with the foundation.
Have you ever had any experience in, we've got a corporate training organization that's just getting revitalized, but a lot of companies do their own training, and we are in the business of training and educating people, of selling that service to corporations, rather than them taking on their own training process. Have you ever had any experience in that?
Yes, actually, I have a lot of experience in that. I originally worked in continuing education, community service, and actually started working with business and industry when, when we first started talking about training in that area and making it a profit center. You know, we need, you know, I don't want to go through every single thing that we need, but we probably need to look at a new model of how we do that. I don't know exactly what you all do here, but we probably should have sell, what we call "salespeople" out there, talking to people out in business and industry to make sure they understand what we can offer them. We probably also would want to be very focused on what we do and not try to do everything, so that we can take programs that we put together for one company and bring them to another company. So, that helps, that helps with regards to our human resources. And that, in some ways, that's some of the products that I was talking about, because it's very possible that we may end up with, through corporate training, end up with a product that we could actually sell to business and industry. The other thing that I was thinking about is, is at Owensboro, we have a manufacturing program, and some of the things that we had been getting interested in, and this is an area where, you know, we could have a product, would be putting together, I'm gonna say models, and I know that's not the exact word, for different types of gadgets that might be needed, so, and, and to do that, you know, through CAD training. Do you all understand what I'm saying? Okay. So, those are, I'm not sure if that is, if that answers, answers your question, but those are some things that, that I, that I think that we could do.
You're out of the box, so that's good.
Pardon me?
Said you're outside the box, but that's good.
Well, that's what, we need to be outside the box, we absolutely need to be outside the box. Some of the other ideas that, you know, when I've talked about looking at programs, in, at Owensboro, we had an automotive program, but we did not, we didn't have people bring their cars in, and we didn't, we didn't do anything with automobiles, and it seemed to me that it would be a really good learning experience for our students, as well as bring in dollars to the college. If we at least, one semester, had some people bring their cars in, the students could practice their customer service skills, as well as work on the automobiles, depending on, you know, what was going on. It's sort of like the program that we do with dental hygiene, where we have a dental hygiene clinic, and the people come in and get their teeth cleaned, and the dollars go back into the program. In Owensboro, we also had a cosmetology program, and the same thing, clients would come in, get their hair done, get their nails done, pay for it, and the money would go back into the cosmetology budget, and over the past two years, we actually asked them to not spend all that budget, so that would help the general college operating budget. And I don't know if, I don't remember if this was in my, in my letter or not, but one of the really kind of innovative things that we did at Owensboro, we had, the Executive Inn was closed, and there was a church group that had been having Sunday services at the Executive Inn, and all of a sudden, they found themselves without a place to meet on Sundays. Now, they had a church that they met during the week, but they had so many people who came on Sundays, they didn't really have a place, so they came to us and wanted to know if they could rent our facilities, three, two small rooms and one very large room, on Sunday mornings, and they paid us $1,000 a week for that. So, we brought in about $30,000 and ended up being a good partner, a good community partner. I'll be real honest, when they first came and asked us, you know, I'm going, "Oh, no, we can't do that, we're a public institution." But then I told myself, "Well, Paula, you're doing exactly what you, what you're always telling people that they need to do, you're not thinking out of the box." So, I, so we ended up having them come, and we ended up, I think it was about $30,000 that we brought in, that we wouldn't normally have had. So, those are some entrepreneurial things that we could do, and you all are already doing. I was just shown a, the conference room in this building, where they do a lot of different types of, I don't want to say conferencing, but they do focus groups to get information to help business and industry with, to solve problems, and even some of the work that they've done here to help St. Pete College solve some of the concerns and issues that they have. And that's, that's another way to bring more dollars into the college.
Dr. G, I want to follow up on one of your answers to Mr. Gibbons, when you talked about in your first 30 days about meeting the legislators.
Mm-hmm.
You served as a provost at Valencia, correct? For four years?
Yes.
And did you have an opportunity at all to spend any time in Tallahassee during that period of time?
Yes, I did.
So, you have some experience walking the halls of the Capitol and?
I actually made a presentation on nursing education to a very large committee that was looking at nursing education. And also, we had a number of legislators would come, for some reason, a lot of people would come to the West Campus, and so Jeb Bush was there at least once, and some of the, some of the legislators came to visit, and I would show them around the campus.
When you compare your role as a provost at Valencia and your experience in working with the delegation, how does it compare to what you needed to do in Owensboro as a president, with working in the Capitol there?
Well, because, you know, the role was a bit different. I spent more time in Frankfurt than I did in Tallahassee. I met with legislators on a regular basis, either at the college or at some events outside the college, and really got, built relationships with a number of the legislators. Spent time in Frankfurt, and brought, I was actually the only college president that brought, two years ago, that brought students with me to talk to the legislators, and the legislators really want to talk to students. So, spent a lot of time doing that and just trying to build relationships. I was there last year, and all I did was tell them they're doing a good job, and that I know there's no money, and so we're not gonna be asking for any.
How many community colleges in?
In Kentucky?
Uh-huh.
16.
16. And does the system, or each particular college, have a lobbyist?
The system would have a lobbyist, but not each, not each college.
Okay, so you were kind of on your own, fighting your own battles for Owensboro, then, in Frankfurt?
Well, we have to be a little careful about that, because we're a system, so, you know, you constantly have to put on the, you know, the team hat.
Sure.
Because you're part of a system, but you also have to wear your hat to advocate for the college, so you have to be, you know, you're, it's a balancing act, you have to be a little bit careful about that.
Sure.
Mr. Brad?
Yes, sir.
Follow up on that?
Please.
I see where you're going. Let me, let me ask this question. So, since there's a system, you would have to support whatever funding was, that was going to be for the entire system, because you all kind of got funded from that. But are there any programs that were kind of niche programs that were only on your campuses that you had to advocate for, for funding in Frankfurt, or even some experience that you had to, you talked about nursing at Valencia, or something, some program that you advocated for in Tallahassee that was only specific to your campus, and how did you go about that?
In Owensboro?
Other ones.
Okay, in Owensboro, we, when I first arrived at Owensboro, just a few months, months after I got there, we opened up an advanced technology center. And because the funding hadn't been there for the full center, we actually, we opened up Phase 1, and so for two or three years, we kept talking to the legislators about Phase 2 of the advanced technology center. And that is a priority, and if the money's there, it's going to be built. The last, the last article in the newspaper that I read, it looked like that Phase 2 is going to be built. So, that would be, it's not a program, but it's a building. And it was also a building that the community and the community leaders wanted to make sure that it, it was built. So, that would have been something that I would have been lobbying on my own for, along with our community leaders.
Want me to go to question three?
Mr. Gibbons? Yes, please.
I have the next question. Leaders often talk about their skill sets, Dr. G. What are your most prominent skills in your set?
Well, I think that, first of all, I think I'm good with the budget. Well, I think that, first of all, I think I'm good with the budget. Every year while I was at Owensboro, we actually added money to the fund balance. And I was very conservative, I think, in my letter and in my resume because I said we added half a million dollars to the fund balance. Well, I just got information, and for '08, '09, we actually added somewhere between $699,000 and $899,000 to the fund balance. And that's quite a bit of money for a college the size of Owensboro. I know that the budget here is pretty large, but it's quite a bit of money to add to the fund balance, and we already had a very healthy fund balance. So probably while I was at Owensboro, we added over a million dollars to the fund balance. So I think that I'm really good with budgeting, and I can tell you how we did that, you know, if you're interested. We actually planned the budget, make, we planned it like we were going to have flat enrollments, and we knew we weren't, but we planned the budget that way. We planned worst-case scenario in case the, in case the state came to us to take dollars out during the year, and they had already cut our budget quite a bit. And then we also looked at different budgets, whether it was academic budgets or other types of budgets within the college, and looked at how much money had been spent the first six months of each year for the three previous years. And then we looked at how much had been spent, say, in May. And from looking at that, we determined that it was very possible that some budgets had some extra money. And so we took those dollars and put them under each, under the appropriate vice president that they would go under. So if we took dollars out of, let's say, an academic department, we put that under the vice president for academic affairs and, you know, business affairs and student affairs and whatever. And then the other piece that we did is we did not hire any new faculty or staff unless there was some reason we absolutely had to have that position filled. So the idea of putting the dollars underneath the vice president, that meant that, two things. One, that if the state came and said, "We need X number of dollars back," we knew where we could get it very quickly. The second thing it did was it also gave the vice presidents the ability to make sure that whatever it was that they needed, whether it was cleaning supplies or a piece of equipment that broke and we hadn't planned for, or supplies in the classroom, that the vice president had those dollars and could give it to the academic department if the academic department or whatever department had run out of dollars. So that's how we kind of, that's how we did the budget. And that's how we ended up adding money to the fund balance. So I think I'm very good with budget. I'm not an accountant, but I look at it, I understand numbers, I can sometimes see that something's not right. It's just kind of like a second instinct. I don't know, I don't really know how to explain it, but I am not, I'll be real honest, I'm not an accountant. I'm also very inclusive and collaborative. I think you could ask anybody that worked at the West Campus and just about anybody at Owensboro, and they'll tell you that I'm very inclusive, I collaborate, I don't ask people to do anything that I wouldn't do myself, and that I brought a realness to the presidency at Owensboro because they see that I'm a real person. And I think those are some, I think those are some of my skill sets. I also think that I'm a good fundraiser, and I think I'm someone who's really good at building relationships, whether it's relationships within the college or in the external community. In fact, just about every community that, every community that I've worked at since I was chief academic officer in Greenfield, I've been told that I get really good marks in the community.
Very good. Okay. Mr. Burke?
Paula, welcome again to Pinellas County. It's nice to have you here, and thank you for applying and showing interest in this position. I know your experience as a provost at Valencia and also up in Kentucky, you didn't have the type of board that we have in the state of Florida and a direct reporting relationship. But would you please talk about what you would expect in a president-board relationship? And I have some follow-up, very specific questions on the topic.
Well, I think that the relationship is two-way, so I'm going to talk a little bit about what I would see that I need to do, and then also talk about some things that I would see that you all would need to do, if that's okay.
Right.
I think that it's real important that the president has really good communication with the board members, and that you are not caught unaware of what might be in the paper the next day, or not be, or that if something's going on on campus, to make sure that you're aware of those sorts of things in case you get phone calls. So I think it's very important to keep you all in the communication loop at all times. I think it's very important that we build a relationship so that we know each other, so that you all have an understanding of how I work and what I'm about and who I am. So we need to build that relationship. From my perspective, I would need you all to work with me, to support me, and to communicate with me, and let me know if you're hearing any kind of rumblings from folks long before it gets, you know, long before it's a problem. I would want brutal honesty, and I think that I would need you all to help me to learn who the movers and shakers are in Pinellas County, and I would need some, would want you to make some introductions. And then the other piece is that, to make sure that we're all on the same page, that we want to move the college forward, and that we're always looking at placing learning first, and that we all know that if we disagree, that's okay, as long as we're putting learning first and our students first.
I'm going to follow up on some of your answer then.
Okay.
First part with communications. Obviously, in any human relationship, it's very natural that some people you just see eye to eye more so than other folks. And the five of us up here get appointed by the governor if they're not selected by the president. And so you may personally, I wouldn't say have a favor because that's a bad way of putting it, but you just, it's easier to communicate with one person over another or... And how would you ensure that even though you may feel a lot more comfortable in one situation with one board member, how do you ensure that you're communicating equally with the same amount of detail as required by the board member, as required by you with each board member?
Well, one of the things that I did in Owensboro, and even though the board is a little bit different in terms of the amount of authority that they have in Owensboro, they still, in a lot of ways, operate like you all do, okay? So one of the things I did with them is I made sure that I included them on communications when I sent out, for example, emails to faculty and staff. I copied them on those emails. So everybody was getting the same information. I tried to meet with different people at different times for, you know, for different reasons. I'd go by, one of the, one of the board members, I went and went by his business, and he showed me all around his business. Actually, that happened for a couple of board members. Another board member was retired, but she golfed, and so she was actually my chair, so we golfed together every once in a while. I think that, you know, part of the communication would happen at the board meeting as well, so you all would hear what I had to say. But I think when we talk about communication, it's always important to remember that what I say may not be what you hear, and what I hear you say may not be what you said. So I think it's important that we ask each other questions and try to build a relationship, you know, individually as well as a team that works for the good of the college. Does that answer your question?
It certainly does.
Okay.
Also on this board, and I'm not sure how it worked in Kentucky, but we have an annual meeting where there's a selection of a chairman and a vice chairman each year. We call that the board politics thing in governance. Does a president have any role in that? Should the governor, should the president be communicating how members are going to be voting on that, or have any opinion on that whatsoever?
Well, you know, the sunshine law worries me a little bit. But I can, I think that a president who's politic and who's smart probably would work to get the chair in that they want. And I'm just going to be real honest about that.
And...
How do you all work that? Are we not answering that question?
I get to ask the questions today. Would you consider a three to two vote? Obviously, everything we have that comes before the board is something that's recommended from the president. Would you consider a three-to-two vote, whether it's either in favor or unfavorable to the position, a reflection of the president, or would you consider it a healthy board debate?
I would see it as a healthy board debate, and depending on what the issue was, what we were voting on, it might be something that we might want to bring back and look at again because there's only five people on the board. Three to two is, doesn't seem to me to be a strong number. So depending on, you know, what it is that you're voting on, we might want to look at it and bring it back up for discussion if we're not going to get a good vote. Can we do that? Is that allowed?
Sure. That is allowed.
Because I, because with, you know, if it was a very large board, and let's say it was seven, let's say we had 10 people, and it was nine people, and we had, it was seven to two, that's a pretty strong vote. But when you're, when it's three to two, it's pretty much split down the middle, so it seems to me that we would need more discussion.
You had the great experience of visiting all of our campuses. I believe you did. You got to all of them.
Absolutely, and it was a wonderful experience.
How would you go about making people on all the campuses feel valued and equal?
Well, I would go about that just like I would go about it if we had only one campus, and that is to get to know people, to go by all the campuses, walk the floors at different times, try to attend and participate in activities that our faculty and staff think are important. You know, that might be Phi Theta Kappa, that might be, last spring semester, I read Jane Austen novels with the faculty, and we discussed it on Tuesday afternoon, so that was a good way to get to know them. I also had, and probably would do this, once I was settled in St. Petersburg, I had faculty and staff over to my house on a fairly regular basis, and different, not the same people, different groups of people, just so that we could get to know each other. It wasn't anything formal. It wasn't, no talking heads, it was just, you know, cheese and crackers in the afternoon.
Okay. Can you talk about, I'm sorry?
Well, it kind of depends on, it kind of depends on the culture. So what I would do in St. Petersburg might be a little bit different because of what the expectations are, what the cultures are, and even on the different campuses, you know, I might do something different to get to know people.
You talked about faculty. What about students?
You mean to get to know students?
To make them all feel valued and equal.
Oh, okay. Well, I can, I'll tell you what I've done in the past, and that is I meet regularly with students. I've had what I called pizza pop in the president. I did that at Owensboro, and I also did that at Valencia. Very low-key sort of thing where students come in, and what I'd want to do is to do that at each campus. I've also met with different groups of students to get their input, you know, depending on what we were doing. For example, we were putting together an honors resource room at Valencia, so I sat down with the honors students and the director of honors and found out what it was that they needed in their resource room. What, you know, we knew they needed computers, but did they want laptops or, you know, just exactly what they wanted? What kind of furniture did they need so that they could study, those sorts of things? I did the same thing with nursing students, and I've also sat and talked to students with disabilities to find out what kind of issues, concerns they had on campus. So those are some of the things I've done. Also, judged speech debates, and worked with Phi Theta Kappa, and worked with Student Government Association.
How many campuses in Owensboro?
Three.
Okay, great. Ms. Millerakis?
Well, my question is, what role have you played in fundraising at your college? I think you've answered a lot of that, right?
At Owensboro Community and Technical College, I provided the leadership for that. I actually put together, when I got there, we did not have an institutional advancement office, and I actually put together an institutional advance office. And we started having, we did our first annual fund drop and raised $62,000. Eighty percent of the faculty and staff participated and gave dollars, 100% of the We also did some events, what I called Season of Sharing events. We did that also, that's also something I started at Valencia, and I brought it with me to Owensboro, in that it was a way for us to celebrate whatever holiday it is that you celebrate in December, because not every, a lot of people celebrate Christmas, but not everybody celebrates Christmas. And also, we see Christmas or those holidays as a way to share with other people. And at Valencia, they, the students had Toys for Tots. And so we took our fundraising effort in Season of Sharing and tied it in with the Toys for Tots that the students were doing. So we ended up doing silent auctions, chili cook-off, different sort of things like that. And we didn't raise a huge amount of money, but we did raise four, five, $6,000 each time we did it, and that was just with the faculty and staff on those campuses.
I'm going to follow up, but this other one is, what experience have you had in working with local and state officials? You mentioned a few things.
You know, I want to go back to fundraising real quick, if that's okay, Evelyn?
Yeah, go ahead.
Every college that I've worked at, I've participated in some form or fashion with regards to fundraising. When I was at Valencia, I had, did some fundraising at my home for the Valencia Foundation, and also worked hand-in-hand with the foundation director to help, we had a particular donor who was, who actually gave in the six figures. And I helped build that relationship, and you all know how important the relationships are. But every single college that I have worked at since I first worked at Paducah Community College in the late '70s, early '80s, I've helped raise funds. And I've also worked out in the community to help raise funds for different types of community organizations. And I think that that's very important to our fundraising efforts at the college, to make sure that we all participate in other fundraising efforts in the community.
Well, I think you realize you have some big shoes to fill.
Absolutely.
And Dr. Culler, whether you agree with him or not, he was right in with the community and getting donors with six figures. And he, and the other thing I'm going to say is, he worked 24 hours a day. How much time are you willing to put into this job?
Well, I'm used to, I'm not used to...
He may have worked too much.
I don't know that I would work 24 hours a day because I do like to sleep. But I can assure you that running a campus with between 13,000 and 14,000 students and then running a college with three campuses, that I put in far more than 40 hours a week. Start early in the morning. My habits are that I would get up early in the morning, have my coffee, and read email, and also read the newspaper because I think it's very important. important that community college president read the newspaper, know what's going on in the community. I see that as part of the job that we should be doing, so that we know what's going on in our community. So read my email, because I might not get to my email again till the evening hours, you know, maybe at nine o'clock. And lots of times, that's the last thing I do before I go to bed, too, is read emails. So it's pretty much an ongoing job. And you have to be available. Sometimes, some weeks you work more hours, some weeks you work the weekends. There are weeks, there are times, particularly right before graduation, where there are a lot of activities that the president is expected to be at. And I attend those activities.
Well, Dr. Cutler had a big staff, and he delegated a lot. How are you in delegating? How will you be in delegating?
I believe that that's why we hire good vice presidents and provosts and deans, so that, so that we can delegate. I am not a micromanager, and don't want to be a micromanager. I want, I really want, and my faculty and staff at Owensboro and at Valencia would tell you, she does not micromanage. She lets us do our job. She actually empowers us.
That's good. The other question is, how much experience have you had in working with local and state elected officials? You answered part of that.
Yes. Well, I had, my greatest extent for doing that is what I have done in Kentucky, working with the local legislators, but also with some of our senate leaders. I've met with Mitch McConnell. Of course, he's from Kentucky several times. I know Jim Bunning's name has been known recently, but he doesn't...
That's if you're on the poll.
He doesn't, he doesn't, he doesn't, he doesn't represent the area that I'm from in Kentucky. But I have met with, with some of the federal legislators as well. Not a lot. The...
It requires a lot of work in Tallahassee, as you know.
Yes. Yes, I know that. And I can tell you that, that in Kentucky, they meet, they have a big meeting, a big legislative session every two years, and then a smaller session in the off-year. And when they had their big session, I spent a lot of time in Frankfurt, a lot of time. Because one of the things I wanted to do was I wanted to make sure that I supported the system, and the things that, you know, the various initiatives and concerns that we had with regards to the budget.
Thank you.
Terry, are we going through the straight two hours? Are we going to take any?
Would you like a break?
It's up to me. I'm just asking. Would you like a break?
I'm fine.
Let's keep going then.
I'm here with you all.
I think you're up, Mr. Burke.
Good. You talked about facilities and visiting our beautiful facilities. I take it they didn't take you to the Clearwater Library, because that's a very beautiful facility. Modern facilities, I, it's so important to have good facilities at a college, because we're competing now against the for-profit, especially. There's more and more competition there, and the battle for facilities is just so important, because you can't be teaching modern-day stuff in inadequate facilities. It just doesn't work. It sends the wrong message. I know you were at Valencia. You have some understanding how the state of Florida works with facilities. What is your commitment to making sure that St. Petersburg College has the premier facilities at each one of our campuses, and each one of our buildings is really meeting the expectations of our students and faculty?
Well, I can tell you right now that you all have some of the most beautiful and fabulous facilities that I have ever seen. I'm extremely impressed. Libraries are one of my favorite places to visit, and you all have some great libraries. There are a couple of areas that it looks like we need to try to find PICO funds for. I'm thinking the, trying to remember, the Health Education Campus, looks like there's some areas there that probably need some refurbishment. And the campus that, I think it's the Clearwater Campus.
Clearwater Campus.
Yeah, okay. Stan is the provost.
Yes.
Okay. So the question is, how would I do that? Or would I do it? And what I would say is, if you look back at what I have done over the past six, seven years, you will see that I have done that very thing. When I got to Valencia, there were a lot of what I would call tired areas on the campus. And I did a lot of work to improve the student spaces, to put some color on the campuses. We did a lot of renovations, including renovating the gymnasium and making it into, the upstairs part of what used to be the gymnasium is now the nursing arts lab, simulated nursing arts lab. So we did some major renovations at Valencia. And some of the, some of the things that we did were not necessarily with PICO dollars, because there were some areas that so badly needed some money put into them. After I got to Owensboro...
What dollars were used then? What dollars were used if you didn't...
You know what, I'd have to, I'd have to go back and ask my facilities person. I don't, I actually don't remember at this point. But in some cases, we, we took some student fees and furnished some student activity places. At, when I arrived at Owensboro, very tired-looking campus, original carpet, campus is 22 years old. The carpet actually had what I would call tripping hazards. I want to remind you all, I have a degree in occupational safety and health. And so, you know, I noticed these things, tripping hazards even in the library. And everything was gray, or black, or white. And so we were, one of the first things I did was, we were putting together the Advanced Technology Center. They were, they were about six months away from finishing that building when I arrived. And so they're showing me all the different, you know, the paint and everything that they're going to use. And they keep showing me gray, silver, and white. And so I said, well, I guess you're going to put color in the furnishings then, huh? And they said, oh, no, these are what's been picked out for the furnishings. And it was gray, silver, and white. So I actually changed that. And then, that was the first piece. Then we actually did some major changes on, on all the campuses. Made student areas more engaging, and provided a better learning atmosphere for the students. So, for example, the library was in really, really bad shape, and students didn't go up there very much. They'd go up there and do what they had to do and leave. So they weren't studying up there. They weren't spending time in the library. So we really worked on the library, made some major changes to that. And it's full. There is, there's hardly a sitting room in the OCTC library at this point. And then we also did that with some other student spaces. Just as, we do, just walk around campus, added some color to the buildings. We didn't, I didn't choose the color. I let the faculty and staff choose the color. We had, we worked with, I worked with architects and with decorators, and they pulled out the colors. And then we let the faculty and staff say, well, we want our building to have these accent colors. Do you see what I'm saying? So we just added a lot of color and added, slowly added new carpeting to different areas, and looked at the areas that were the worst, and tried to, tried to take care of them first. So, so I would definitely keep up and make sure that it's important. And I think it's important, because I think that, first of all, we want, we want people who come in here, into our buildings, to know that we have a real sense of pride in the work that we do. And the other piece is that we want our students to know that, we want our students to be, feel engaged, and we want them to be here. If they're here, they're probably studying. They're probably being, talking to other students, and getting together study groups. It's just, makes for a much more engaging atmosphere if we have good facilities, places for students to sit, places for students to study, places for students to socialize. And of course, if the students have places like that, so do the faculty and staff. And that helps morale. And I didn't even talk about equipment. But you, that wasn't really an equipment question, was it?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Johnson?
I know you're somewhat familiar with our four-year baccalaureate program. And I know we asked you to comment on it on your DVD. But I'd like to know how you really feel about that in a community college. And will you continue the effort that we have started here in St. Petersburg and are very proud of, because we're serving a need in our community? And what are your thoughts on the baccalaureate program being delivered in a community college setting?
The first community college that I ever worked at was Paducah Community College. I first taught dental hygiene there. And then, a couple of years later, came back and was the coordinator for continuing education. And at that time, I was in Leadership Paducah. One of the areas that, in Leadership Paducah, that we noticed is that we didn't have any, other than the community college, we didn't have other higher education opportunities. And in order to get a four-year degree, you had to drive, depending on where you lived in Paducah, but at least 40 minutes, maybe as much as 50 or 60 minutes, to get to Murray State University. And it was a country road. Or you could cross the river and end up in Illinois and drive to SIU in Carbondale, which was probably an hour and a half or two hours. Or you could drive two hours and end up in Owensboro or in Evansville. So there really weren't any higher education opportunities. And that was probably in, I left Paducah in 1990 and moved to Ohio. And at that time, I was, it was even in my head, why can't community colleges answer the needs of their community by offering baccalaureate programs? Of course, the state doesn't allow it. And in Kentucky, the state still doesn't allow it. When I was in Massachusetts, I met your president, Dr. Cutler, at Jim Samuel's house in Franklinham, Massachusetts. Jim is a big leader and believer in offering baccalaureate programs at community colleges. And so it was at that point that, that I'm going, wow, maybe we'll really do this. And I really believe that, that offering baccalaureate programs is the 20, is the community college's 21st century way of answering the workforce needs of our community. And I think as long as we keep our mission in front of us, and what the needs of our community, what the needs are, then whatever we offer is appropriate. So, you know, am I in favor of it? Yes, I am.
Well, a lot of, I won't say a lot, because I don't know how many, but I believe of the 28 community colleges, not all of the community college presidents are solidly behind this effort. And there's, there's been a lot of discussion at the state level as just how to do this program. We at St. Pete, and I think we are the only community college that has the right, without anybody else's approval, to start a baccalaureate program. It's up to the five of us to make the decision and not have to go elsewhere. And that doesn't seem to sit, sit well with some of the other people in the state. They've tried to make them all under the chancellor or somebody else. And we like that, right? Because we think we can serve our community better. And I don't know how you feel about that. But that's the way we've been going. And I would assume the next president's going to have to either let us know in a different direction, or agree with us, and we all will go in unison.
No, I think that, I think that it's long overdue. Just like I said in my video, I really believe that it's long overdue, particularly in certain communities. And one of the reasons that we need it in Florida is because there's just so many people who want to go to college. Even when I was in Orlando, the University of Central Florida were turning away local students that they had normally accepted. And we were seeing more and more of those at Valencia. So we know that we, we have students who need to, who want to transfer. We need to have places for them to transfer. We need more, more opportunities for higher education.
At Valencia, had they gotten into the four-year program before you left?
No, they had, no, they had not. They had worked with the University of Central Florida to, with some very specialized articulation agreements. And also, the University of Central Florida, when I first got to Valencia, they were offering courses, but no programs. And I did some strategic planning with the West Orange Chamber of Commerce. And it was very evident that the leaders in that part of the county wanted more higher education opportunities, particularly the junior and senior level courses. And they wanted programs. They didn't, they didn't want just courses. So I went to the person who was in charge of the program on the west campus. And we talked, and we figured out a way to start offering programs. I made more space available to him, and to the UCF students, who actually were former Valencia students. And, and actually, they renovated some of the space at the Valencia campus for their needs, which of course was advantageous for our students as well. And then we also planned a joint-use facility, and got that approved. And since I left, that building has been built.
I want a follow-up question.
Dick, can I ask a question? Valencia doesn't offer four years, I don't think currently.
They're getting ready to. They're planning, they're planning, I think, a radiology program and an engineering program.
Valencia will actually offer the degree?
That's my understanding, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Dr. G, you commented in your, your comments there about working with the Chamber of Commerce?
Mm-hmm.
Is that what, in Valencia, or?
Kentucky.
We're getting off the subject here a little bit. But can you tell us your community involvement, of how you worked that out with the chambers, either in Kentucky or over in Orlando?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
You made a comment there about you'd worked with the...
I worked with the West Orange Chamber of Commerce, yes.
I don't think about the West Orange, but I know something about Chamber Commerce, a few of us do. But how did you, did you initiate that, or did they initiate it?
They were doing strategic planning, and asked me to be part of the strategic planning process. And so I was. While I was in Orlando, I also was, did Leadership Orlando, and then actually ended up being on the board as well. And that is through a different Chamber of Commerce in Orlando. While I was in Owensboro, I helped do strategic planning for the city of Owensboro.
So then you're, you're alluding to your community involvement, which is where I was trying to get through.
Yes, yes, yes. Well, I've done a variety of, you know, been involved in a lot of different things in the communities, every place I've lived. Worked with various chambers of commerce. I've done, I did Leadership Kentucky last year, and met a lot of movers and shakers in Kentucky. Did, I did Leadership Orlando, and then I've also done Leadership Portage County in Ohio, and Leadership Paducah. And that's one way to really meet people, and understand what's going on in the state, or at the local level. I have worked with chambers of commerce. I have sat on United Way boards, Red Cross. I've done crazy things like, last year, they had what's called a, I'm trying to think, remember what it's called, a toast of the town. And it's where people dress up and perform. And it might be, you know, a pantomime. And so a couple of women in Owensboro wanted to, they wanted to be the Shirels. And so we dressed up like the Shirels. And we had a lot of fun, and that was to raise money for, for some of our young people who are living in poverty.
Well, the reason, at least in my opinion, I don't, I won't speak for the other four Well, the reason, at least in my opinion, I won't speak for the other four board members, but the presidency of St. Petersburg College is a very prominent position in our community. And our, we have, at this institution, have done a lot for our community because we're involved in it. All of us here are involved in some way in the community. And I assume that the presidency, who follows Dr. Cutler, will also be out, not in their office all the time, but they've got to be sharing what the community needs and learning what the community needs are and participating in the community. And so it's kind of anxious to hear what you, your involvements were.
Actually, I would see myself being out in the community very much. I don't see how we could continue the community partnerships without the president being in the community. I also, particularly in the very beginning, I think it's really important that, that as a new president, that I would get out and meet everybody, go to various Chamber of Commerce meetings and just do everything that I can to get to know people in the community.
Would you expect the board to help you in these introductions? I think you alluded to this.
I would like for you all to help me. I think, I would like to say this, is I think whoever comes in as president, whether it's me or somebody else, is going to, you know, it's going to be a very different atmosphere with a new president after you've had a president here for 31 years. You know, he knew everybody. He grew into the position. So now, a new president's coming in and that president, no matter who it is, is going to have to grow into that position and will need help from the board.
I agree. Mr. Gibbons?
It's not going to be the same as having somebody who's been here for 31 years. And that's true, that would be true for the faculty and staff as well.
We know that.
I think what Mr. Johnson was alluding to is it's going to be a 16 to 18-hour day job. That's what people are accustomed to. Trying to follow up a guy who was everywhere all the time is very difficult. But I like your response to that. For the purpose of being fair, I need Ms. Corey to time her response to this question to the rest of the panel. You know, as chair, as president of St. Petersburg College, Dick has already said that it is a lot, there's a lot required of the individual. You've now seen all of our campuses. You've been around to, I think, all of them, if not, and seen the Centers of Excellence and all those other things that you said you like. But really, at the end of the day, you are the chief salesperson for St. Petersburg College. So this board sitting up here, you need to sell us on St. Petersburg College in one minute or less.
In one minute or less?
One minute or less.
Is that what she said?
Yes, ma'am, one minute or less.
And I'm selling the board? I'm not selling students?
We can be individuals, students, however you see it. But you've got to sell this college in one minute or less to whoever this audience is that you're speaking to. You can choose whoever you want us to be. If you need to see me in little kids' clothes, then that's fine. But you need to sell us on St. Petersburg College in one minute or less. Whenever you're ready.
Do I get a chance to think for a second?
You can think, yeah.
Give her a few minutes here.
Do you want like a cheer or a poetry?
Whatever you say. However you see it, Dr. G, feel free to incorporate the Shirels if you'd like.
I'll just have to think for a second.
It's been a long three days, hasn't it?
It has. I'm ready. St. Petersburg College is the best. St. Petersburg College has the rest. St. Petersburg College likes guests. St. Petersburg College wants you.
Bravo.
Very good.
Thanks. I have a question.
And if I was standing up and there was a little music, I would dance?
Your references were all contacted and surveyed for their opinions on your strengths and weaknesses. And one of the strengths that stood out on the list that caught my eye was that you are a change agent. Do you feel like you're a change agent? And explain why?
I think that the last two positions that I've had, yes, I've been a change agent. And I think I've been a change agent because that's what needed to happen. When I, when I first got to Owensboro, here's an example. When I first got to Owensboro, and I don't know, I hope I haven't, you know, I've talked to so many different people and said the same thing so many different times. If I've already said this, just put your hand up and say you already told us that. When I first got to Owensboro, I had, if I wanted to talk to somebody in academic affairs, I had two different people I had to talk to. Student affairs, three different people. Business, three different people. And so one of the first things I did was make a change with regards to the organizational structure. Because it was clear to me that I was confused. And it was also clear that there was no accountability. So I worked with folks, found out where they wanted to be. I worked with them to find out where their strengths were and moved them around. And that was one of the ways I ended up putting together an institutional advancement office. So, you know, so that's one of the changes that I make. I would say that, yes, I'm a change agent, but I'm not a person who makes changes just to be making changes, just because I want it the way I want it. I make changes by getting input from all the faculty and staff. I would get input from the board. I would get input from people out in the community, if that was appropriate. You just heard that I would give a survey my first 30 days just to find out what you all think I should be concentrating on. So, yes, I think I am a change agent. But I think it's because that's what was needed at the last two places that I've been. And I guess probably the next question is, so what would I do here, huh?
Sure.
Well, I'll tell you that, first of all, I, you know, my first impressions are that there doesn't look like there's a lot of change that needs to happen. Those are my first impressions. It looks to me like there's a new academic organization in place and it's been there for a year and a half. And that's probably not long enough to see if it's working or not. And so obviously, that would stay in place. The facilities are in great shape. The cleanliness of the facilities is in great shape. The only thing, based on the questions, and I'm just going to be really honest here, the one thing that I have heard through the questions and the various places, and it's been just little, what I would call droplets here and there. But my perception is that, that there are some, and maybe a number of folks here at St. Petersburg College that feel like maybe we have strayed a little bit from our mission. So one of the things that I would want to do is to really bring people together and say, let's think about learning. Let's make sure that everything we do has to do with learning. The learning experience of students and also the learning experience of our faculty and staff. Because we're all still learning. And any, any organization that we have here at the college or any partnership that we have made, how is that going to affect learning? How is, how are we going to use it to, so our students will have a better learning experience or so our faculty and staff can have a better learning experience? Do you see what I'm saying? And I think we have some real opportunities. And a good example is the American stage, where we have, I think, some real opportunities to work with them to create a great theater program. Theater in terms of being an actor and actress on stage or in terms of what happens behind the scenes. Costume design, set design, learning how to operate lights. I'm not a theater person, so, but I do have a little bit of an idea of what happens. But I'm just saying, that's, that's one of the opportunities that I think we have. But that's what I mean by looking at some of the organizations that we've partnered with. And that doesn't mean that we would say we're not going to partner with you all anymore. But we need to be looking at it in terms of, how does that affect the learning experience for our students, for our faculty, for our staff?
Paula, you? Is that flag for me?
Yes, please.
Well, you had in your resume about Valencia being a college that's part of the League of Innovation, which is quite impressive. And also, they're a Lumina Foundation achieving the dream. Were you part of either one of those initiatives?
Oh, absolutely.
And could you tell us about what your involvement was to make those happen?
The League for Innovation Learning College, that actually happened before it started. It's my understanding, it started before Sandy Schugert even became president. So by the time I got there, the strategic plan was the most unusual strategic plan that I had ever seen. It would have almost like little cheerleading.
Was Valencia a member before or was it in the process of trying to become a member of?
No, Valencia is a member of the League.
Okay.
I think, I'm not sure, but they may have been one of the original members. I know that Cuyahoga was where I used to be. I know they were an original member. But they were, they were one of 12 League for Innovation Learning Colleges. And like I said, it started before Dr. Schugert. The strategic plan addressed that. And it was, like, the first piece of the strategic plan was start right. And there were all the different ways that we were going to have students start work right and how we were going to be ready for the first day of class. Another piece of it was diversity matters. And then there were all the different goals that we had with regards to diversity. There was another piece that learning's first. And so there were all the different things that we were going to be doing in academic affairs. And when I went in for the interview, there were a lot of questions with regards to learning. In fact, they even changed the name of the Chief Academic Officer to the Chief Learning Officer. So that's how much it was incorporated into the culture.
And how about the achieve the dream?
Achieve the dream? We actually got that grant from the Lumina Foundation while I was there. And so I worked very closely with my faculty and deans to implement that. I don't even want to call it a program. It was, the real idea for that initiative, and again, initiative is not a good name for it, was to really change the culture, to really change the work that we do with students and with students, with students of color. With our Hispanic students and with our African-American students. What we wanted to do is we wanted to close the gap. We wanted to make sure that they were completing courses, completing degrees at the same rate as the Caucasian students. So I worked very closely, every campus, just like the campuses here, had a different culture. And there were different pieces that worked. And what worked on one campus didn't necessarily work on another campus. For example, East Campus had learning communities and was doing a really good job with learning communities. On the west campus, we just simply, for some reason, could not get our students interested in learning communities. So what happened was our faculty, who taught developmental courses, put together their own, it was a learning community of faculty, and they would work with each other so that they knew what, because they had the same students. And they could talk to each other about how the students were doing so that they could help them better. We also had, on west campus, we took, I can't remember what the name of it is, but for math, we actually did several things with math because math is the biggest hurdle that our community college students have to jump through or over. We had a group of faculty who were really working with the students so that they could pass the FCAT, I think that's what it's called. And so they would, they had a list of all the different skills that had to be mastered in math. And as, and they worked with the students one-on-one. And as they acquired one mastery level, they checked them off and have them move on to the next. And then after they passed the test, they had a big celebration for them. And so there was a lot of one-on-one, individualized attention, a lot of support, a lot of work, different types of work. And also, a lot of discussion about what the literature says with regards to developmental education, what the literature says with regards to math. So we had speakers come in, we had some consultants come in.
Do you have any idea what the money award was for that, from Lumina Foundation to your college?
It was not huge. It was, it was not a lot. And I don't want to say how much it was, but it was not, it was not like our Department of Labor grants, you know, where we get $1.9 million or an NSF grant where you get $500,000. I'm thinking, but don't quote me, I'm thinking that maybe it was about $100,000. So like I said, it was not huge. We also, one of the things I did at the west campus to help improve math was I got our, we had this huge space when I arrived there and it was the math lab, but students weren't using it. I mean, it was seldom, seldom used. I'd walk, I'd go up to walk around the campus and go visit it at 10 o'clock in the morning. There wasn't anybody there. So then I thought, well, maybe they're busy at 11, weren't there? Well, maybe I'm here on the wrong day. So I found out that it really wasn't being well-used and it was huge, huge space. So we actually put together a group of math faculty. They gathered information from all the math faculty on the west campus and created an absolutely wonderful math lab. And after they did that and made some changes with regards to the actual facility, they also made some changes with regards to the curriculum. So the students who had to take lab, they actually had an open lab. So students would come to the math lab and instead of being in a course with another 20 students, they would sit down at a computer and work one-on-one and they would have some individualized attention. And they also changed, we also changed tutoring as a result of what we did with regards to the math lab. I do believe that with regards to the Lumina Foundation, that Valencia, I did read, where they won a very special award for the work that they had done. Because they had, they had closed the gap. In fact, it's my understanding that the Hispanic students were actually, had surpassed the Caucasian students in being retained from course to course and in graduation rates.
One last question on this. Why didn't you try to get that same type of initiative at Owensboro? Owensboro?
Why didn't I? Is that what, you mean Lumina Foundation?
Yeah.
Owensboro is not, is not very, it's not a very diverse community. So we probably only have like 5% people of color in our community. And what we did try to do there was, we worked really hard to increase the number of African-American students we had at the college. And we went from about, while I was there, we went from about 3.9% to 5%. We actually had a higher percentage at the college than the demographics of Owensboro. So that's good. The other thing that we did is that we went from having about 5% of our faculty and staff, people of color, to almost 10%. It was like 9.8%. And I did that by working very closely with the Director of Diversity and just making sure that we were putting the search committees together appropriately and not making sure that we were getting the right people in.
I wanted to ask you, where did you grow up?
Where did I grow up?
Yeah, where were you born, where were you?
I grew up in Henderson, Kentucky. And I was one of seven children. I was the second to the oldest. My dad was a barber and when the Beatles came along, people quit getting their hair cut. And so my mother had to go to work and my grandmother came to live with us. And I wouldn't have been able to go to college if there hadn't been a community college in Henderson. And that is true for all my brothers and sisters.
How big is that city where you grew up?
About 25,000. It's probably the same size as Tarpon Springs.
Yeah, 24, I think, there.
Mr. Johnson, I know you got a question.
Mr. Johnson, I know you had a question.
I'm looking at your strengths and listening to you, and I wonder, you know, you're very refreshing, you're very upfront and very honest. That's the appearance that I'm receiving. And I wonder if that ever turns into a weakness with people?
You know, I'll tell you what I believe. I believe that every strength that any of us possess can turn into a weakness when it's overused, or it's to the extreme. You know, it's sort of the yin and the yang. So, could it turn into a weakness? Yes. Has it turned into a weakness? You know, I'd have to think about that. I would say that, I really, truly, I think it works for me. For me, it's important that people know who I am and know what I'm about. And I, and it's important for me to be comfortable in my own skin. Now, that doesn't mean that I don't know how to be politic. That doesn't mean that I don't, if I see somebody in the community, and they say, I met you at such and such, even if I don't recognize them, I'm going to say, oh, yes, I remember you.
That's it.
Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So, I just, you know, yes, you're right, it can be a weakness. But I think any strength that we, any individual has can also be, the flip side can also be a weakness.
I was just wondering, with your past presidency in Queens, Orangeburg, that if that, because you just come across as being a very upfront person, and I just wondered if that could be a detriment to you at times, and maybe it has been, I don't know. We're, we're just trying to get to know you as best as we can with whatever questions come to our mind.
Right. What happened to me in Owensboro, I've really, I have a habit of, when something goes wrong, whether, you know, it's in my personal life, or whether it's, you know, in my professional life, or whether it's just some little something. I really usually spend some time thinking about what could I have done differently? Because I want to learn from my experiences, whether they're good or bad. And, you know, you really learn from, from bad experiences, or when you, when you're not successful at something. And I've spent a lot of time on that, and I'll be real honest, I don't think that there's, I don't think that there's anything I could have done differently. Because I certainly wasn't going to let this small group run the college like they had been running it. Because that's not fair to the college. And one of the things that's, that happened at Owensboro is the faculty and staff, the majority of them felt like, for the first time, they could do their job. They felt empowered. They felt they were being, they were part of the decision-making process.
Paul, what would you have done differently, though, to, obviously, because the president of the system took you from that position, what would you have done differently with hindsight, which I wouldn't have bought Qualcomm back in 2000 with hindsight? But what would you have done differently to maybe been more successful long-term there? What have you learned from that experience, I guess? Still knowing what the change you had to do, and I know you put you in your, you, one of your references said, she restored morale and spurred innovation time when both were needed to thrive in the difficult circumstances we face. So, that was a nice comment made by a faculty member, but, you know, I'm sure that it's joy seeing you leaving if you're this change agent who helped restore the morale there and that type of thing, so.
I think that the only things that I could think that, that possibly might have made a difference, and I'm not really sure that it would have, would, maybe if, maybe if my board had realized that they needed to pay more attention to the new president than they had the previous president who had been there for a period of time. So, maybe I should have communicated better with my board. I'll take on, I'll take my part in that. But I know that my board says that they, and I don't know if you talked to any of them, and they said this, but I know that at least one of them thought that, that they did not do a good enough job to help me, and to know, you know, some of the, some of the politics that was going on in the local community. The other piece where I think that, that, where I could have done something different was, well, two things. One, I wished that I had realized, and maybe I was, maybe it was coming, maybe the information was coming to me and I just wasn't listening, but there were some leaks in the system office. There was some stuff going on in the system office. I was working with some people in the system office, and it appears that they were going behind my back. So, I guess what I'm saying is, I wish that I had not been trusting of certain people. And I wish that I had followed my first gut instinct, and that was to move somebody from the position that she was in into another position. And I had gone to my board, and I told him that's what I was going to do. And then, the people at the system office in Versailles didn't want me to do that. They talked me out of doing that. And I'm a team player, and so, I put my team player hat on and said, okay, well, you all know best. And I just fell off that mountaintop. In hindsight, in hindsight, I would have, and I can't remember if I already told you about this or not, but originally, I applied for the job at Owensboro and withdrew. Did I tell you that?
No.
Originally, I applied for the job at Owensboro, and I withdrew my name because I decided that I liked Valencia, I liked the work that I was doing. There was some work I wanted to finish at Valencia. And that included building three new buildings, and one was going to be, we had planned a green building with LEED certified. And I was 14 months away from being vested, so, in the retirement system, and I love Florida. So, I had my, so I had pulled out. And I also have to say that I pulled out because I, something in the back of my head or in my gut was telling me that Owensboro wasn't the place for me. But I got a phone call from several people, and asking me to put my name back in, and that these, the folks on the search committee really wanted me to put my name back in, they were really interested in me. So, I guess in hindsight, I would have paid attention to my gut.
You don't have any gut feelings like that about St. Pete College, do you?
No, no.
Did Mike McCall hire you there?
Well, we're obviously looking for someone, and it's going to be a difficult position to follow anyone who's been here 31 years. I guess that's the length of time that Carl was here. It's going to be difficult. And I think any person that comes in here and thinks it's going to be rosy and smooth, it probably won't be. And we don't want someone who isn't committed, because I personally don't want to do this again.
Not like through a search process.
We don't need to do that. So, we're looking for just that right person, and who that is, we don't know. But like I said, I just wondered, it, you know, you seem so upfront and so honest, that does that create a problem somewhere where you don't even anticipate it? Because sometimes, we do get so frank with people, and I appreciate your frankness today, especially on the situation you had there in Orangeburg. Because it gives us a better insight into who you are and what really happened.
Any other questions? What would you like to say before we wrap things up? Is there anything that we did not cover that you feel that you would like to share with us, or?
I would just, I would just like to say that you all have an absolutely wonderful college here, wonderful facilities. I know you know that, but it's, I also know that it's nice to hear that from an outsider.
Thank you.
And also, a really wonderful, warm and caring group of people work here. I can tell that. I would love to be your next president. If you, if you need to talk to me further, I'm available. And if you don't choose me, I wish you good luck with your new president. Okay?
Is there, is there any questions you have at any of us individually? Because you don't know us at all, or I assume you don't.
Just what I read, you know, online.
We know all that's true.
But is there anything you wanted to ask any of us?
You know, I was, let's come back to the question of what you all, how you all expect the president to work with you.
Well, I think, as was explained, we want a, we want a good working relationship. I think Ken got into it. Where we know what's going on, we're informed on the main issues. We don't need to have, because we all have our own occupations elsewhere.
Right.
So, we don't need to be involved in all the day-to-day trivia that goes on. But the main issues and concerns we should be made aware of, either through email or telephone calls, or however it's appropriate. We all have friends in the employment of the college that bring us information. And what I try to do is take it back to the president and say, is this really happening this way?
Right.
So, we try to make it two ways. But I think that's the atmosphere we have to have, is kind of a, our president generally sits right there at a board meeting. And we share things, and we may see the president from time to time individually, or socially, or, and you see him socially, the college was always part of the subject matter. We don't talk amongst ourselves, so we have to be just blunt enough at a board meeting to say whatever we're concerned about. Because I can't call up Dever and say, Dever, why did you do this?
You do that all the time.
That's good. You just got Sid all the time.
Can you strike that from the record?
I don't believe you just said that, Dever.
He's very conscious of the sunshine law.
Mr. Givens, you had your hand up.
Yeah.
You still have a question?
I'm ready to go.
He's got his foot in his mouth now.
Thank you, Dr. G. I just want to say thank you for, it was very refreshing to have you here. And I don't know where you'll end up, but if you are the next president, I think that one of the things that we expect as a board is, I try to use, use this rule all the time, is noses in, fingers out. You know, put your nose in enough to know what's going on, but keep your fingers out of the day-to-day operation for our president.
Oh, I like that.
And then, just make sure that, you know, that each board member is treated equitably and fairly, and gets the information at the same times and that kind of stuff. And I think, I think that your interview was a very good one, and I think that...